Ladies and gentlemen, it's really close about a minute or so to six. We'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everyone out here. We really like to have participation in our city council meeting, so appreciate you being here. I've asked Councilman Welton if he would give us an opening prayer.
Father of heavens, we come before thee this evening. We're thankful to be able to meet in a free country where we can meet with our elected officials in our community to discuss the betterment of our community. We're thankful, Father, for the beautiful town of Payson which we live and for the friends and the family that make this place home. We're grateful, Father, for a time of year where we can reflect and serve one another, help us to think of ways that we can make our community better and strive for to find opportunities to serve. We pray, Father, that we can have meaningful discussion this evening and we'll be able to discuss things in a productive manner to better our community. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Doug. May the Lord lead us in the praise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the resolve with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda, the consent agenda approval of the November 19th, 19th, 2019 special city council meeting, the resolution identifying and approving certain individuals to have access to manage the funds within the state of Utah PTIF. So, to have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll take it.
Okay, it's been moved and a second's been made. This calls for a roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman Hyatt. Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to see petitions, the public forum. If anyone can speak on items that are not on the agenda, time limit is three minutes. And take less if you can, and so we'll go to that time, that point. Does anyone in the audience want to take advantage of the public forum? Come on up. State your name and where you live, if you would.
Randy Memmott, Welton, Payson. I'd like to ask the council on that, when are you going to let the pit look for bid at the trash pile, or when are you going to advertise it?
Okay. We've had extensive talks about that. It's not required by law, but we're still talking about that. So it's something we're aware of.
Okay, thanks.
You bet. Thank you, Randy. Okay, anyone else would like to take advantage of the public forum? Not seeing any, we'll go ahead and close the public forum and move on to staff reports. Any of the staff would like to come in?
Mayor and council, I thought I'd give you Councilman Welton's snow update, so you can post that.
Thank you.
We are, right now, eighty-five percent on precipitation. Snow water equivalent is one hundred and seventeen percent. And then it says we've got nine inches of snow up at the snowmobile site, so it's doing all right. I mean, it's not great, but it's not bad. So, we're getting a little bit of rain tonight, maybe that'll help it. Just an update, we talked to our contractor today on the PI meters, they will start putting those in on Monday, so we'll see how that goes. But we are ready, we bought the meters, so. And then today, we submitted for four MAG projects.
Can I ask you a question on that real quick? Is there a map showing where they're going to start in the city? I don't remember if I saw one or not.
I haven't seen one. We can ask them.
It'd be nice to have.
I do know they will notify with door hangers and stuff, you know, where they are, but yeah, I haven't seen a map actually showing where they're handling, so we'll have to get over the numbers. Thank you. And then today, we submitted for four MAG projects, so we'll see, you know, how many of those we get approved. I know that Jill Nestor and I put in some time to try to get those applications ready, and I know that they met with the mayor today to kind of go over those. So if you have any questions later, we can go over where those are, but obviously, it's time we go through the process. We don't know if we'll get, you know, approved for those, but we at least apply, so. If you have any other questions, that's all good.
Mayor and council and public, just a little bit of update on our recreation programs. We're just wrapping up our youth wrestling. Last night, we had a good match, and then next week, we'll have the inner-city squad match. We do that each week, where we'll bring in all the wrestlers at once to Mount Nebo Junior High, and we'll have a good few hours of little league wrestling. So if you'd like to see some kids running around and getting in, come join us. Also, we're wrapping up our youth volleyball, for girls volleyball, and it's been a great season so far with that. And we are taking registration for the winter programs, all of the winter sessions, and gymnastics, and dance, and tumbling, and cheer, as well as youth basketball and the youth skiing program. So those registrations are going on right now.
Sorry. Mayor, city council, members of the public, sorry, I forgot to print this off, so it's really small this week, but the report from the police department last month is we've had one hundred and twenty-eight arrests, two hundred and twenty-one offenses, two hundred and four citations issued that resulted in two hundred and ninety-six violations. We responded to a thousand fourteen calls, arrested nine DUI intoxicated drivers. We made three hundred and forty-seven traffic stops and investigated thirty traffic accidents, all within a couple of days with the snow. So DUIs are pretty high this month, so it's a season of celebration. But anyway, I just want to thank everybody. As you know, Officer Knight's wife passed away on the sixteenth of November, and he wanted me to pass along to all those that have reached out and offered condolences to him and his family. So I just wanted to thank some of the mayors approaching me and a few others, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Chief. Come on up, Janine.
Mayor and council, I'm excited because I actually have a voice, so I may sing this time. Anyway, I want to thank Brett and Linda, Mayor and Doug, for supporting the Santa Dash. It was a lot of fun. It was cold. It didn't snow. I think it was more like sleet. And our sixteen runners come in sliding, so it was pretty, it was dangerous. So anyway. Chief Bishop was good enough to have a couple of these cars and even an ambulance, so it really slowed down the traffic of these guys coming in, so I appreciate that. The Christmas caroling though was very successful this year. I was going to hurry and report before Chief Spencer came in, but we had like three hundred and sixty people in the auditorium, so we were really crammed in there. Anyway, but it was very successful. I think everyone had a great time. Barnett Elementary was wonderful. Did the bells and everything. So then we all went outside, Payson Market donated donuts, and to watch the lights. Come on. So that was really fun. Just a little plug, I could always use more lights, you know. Main Street looks beautiful. Now it's time, let's, I'd love some more lights at the PTNEAT, so. Let's see, I wanted to do a shout-out about the PTNEAT Christmas boutique and train show. That's December thirteenth and fourteenth. So we'll have around thirty vendors, and I kind of put them inside the museum in each room. They'll have two to three vendors, so that way it opens the door. People haven't seen the museum for a while. They can come in and see the museum and fight off those vendors that are sitting there too, so. Doug Lamb will be doing our train show again this year. You know, he is getting older, so I just appreciate him so much. He's been working for about a month getting that little train ready. And to the public, if you've never been to the PTNEAT museum, this is the time to go. It's beautiful. It's all decorated in Christmas, and you don't want to miss the train show. Little miniature trains that go around everywhere through Utah. There's a winter scene. There's a military base that goes through and Mesa Verde. I mean, it's really neat. You don't want to miss that. We have a Barbie display that's put on by Dale Barnett's sister-in-law. She's ninety-one this year, so she came and set that Barbie display. So you have Barbies that are worth a lot of money in there. Just, I mean, they're just old, the antique Barbies. It's a beautiful display. We'll have a lot of entertainment this year from several dance companies coming, singing groups. We have, Payson High Orchestra will visit us. Their singing group will be visiting us, and a couple of families will be coming to sing. So it's just a fun-filled, two days of winter activities going on. Santa Claus will be there Friday from five to seven, and then Saturday from ten to one. And he's the real one, so you want to be there. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Janine.
And council, just a couple of reports. We do have our finance director starting on Monday. It'd be good to fill that position, and Sarah's been great to keep us going and finishing up the audit for us, but that'll be Monday. She is actually going to come and help do some training as well. And then just a reminder, the employees' Christmas luncheon will be on the nineteenth. Depending on when turkeys and hams come, we may have to come and help. We're going to try to pass those out on the twelfth, so next week, a little bit early. But we'll send an email out or a text to you when we get that, so if you could participate there, that'd be helpful too, so. Thanks.
Thanks, Dave. We have any other staff? Doesn't look like it, so we'll move on to council reports, starting with council and citizens.
All right, just a couple of items I'd like to talk about. First of all, the Santa Dash was a lot of fun. It was crowded. I was impressed. A lot of people showed up for that. I appreciated the turnout we had at the press race derogation meeting. I know that it didn't feel like it started out the best, a little bit rocky at first, but I feel like we got most of the concerns resolved and smoothed out. If there's any more of those, feel free to email me, and I will hunt down the answers for you. I'm wondering about if we've made any progress on getting an email list. I know that the citizens probably aren't as well informed, because we don't have an accurate email list that we can send that information out. I think we need to work towards that, something. I know most people don't read their bills, they just pay them, right? But something there, we need to get out there. And then I was, as I was looking through the emails, there was somebody brought up a concern about thirteen hundred east, up there by Parkway. I know at one point in time, we had a mobile speed little trailer. Just wonder if we still have that available and if we can get it out there and set it up, see where we're at, sort of slows them down.
Councilman, I have called and talked to them back today, so.
Thank you. So I never know what gets followed up on. I see all these emails and think, should I respond to this or not? Maybe I need to respond tomorrow, but anyway. Thank you, that's all. Keep up the good work.
I have nothing today.
Okay, I just want to mention the Santa Dash also. Been there in years past, and we've had more runners than we did this time, but the weather was miserable. And I kind of chuckled. The first person that came down to get the water and donut from me was an older guy, and I think it had to have been his grandson, or maybe he wasn't as old as I thought he was. And I looked at him and I said, "Did you, did you run the Santa Dash?" The little boy told me he did, and I said, "Did you run the Santa Dash?" And he looked right straight at me and said, "We cheated. We were on a four-wheeler." But he took the hot chocolate and donut, both, so. Anyway, I laughed. I thought that was, he was the first one that made it there, so. Anyway, I appreciate Janine and all she does, and I'm looking forward to the, on the thirteenth and fourteenth, I spend a lot of money buying stuff. Dave's not looking forward to it, but I am. Anyway, and I appreciate all the city staff and all that they do. Thank you.
I'll report on something that Doug and I were able to participate in, and there'll be more information on this as we do a press release in the Payson Chronicle, but as a result of the city council voting to go with ranked choice voting this particular cycle, an organization known as Fair Vote back in Washington DC wanted to honor us. As doing that, there was one other community in the state that did it, and that was Vineyard. And so they actually flew myself and Doug back to Washington DC, as well as, I believe, Amelia Powers, is that her last name, and also the mayor of Vineyard, Mayor Fulmer. And we were able to be the recipients of an award that they presented us with. So I just wanted to make sure that the citizens are aware of that, and there will be more to follow in the Payson Chronicle, as we're getting a press release for that. So thank you.
Yeah, it was actually a really neat experience to be able to go to Washington DC, and I appreciated the opportunity to go there. Stan Lockhart took us around and took us to all the Utah delegation, and that was nice to be able to go and meet with all of our senators and congressmen, or at least their staff if they weren't there. And the mayor was able to kind of lobby for our FEMA maps to be redone, so we can take care of the flooding issues that are kind of hindering our business park. And then also, we talked to them about I-15 and speeding up the new exit. So that was kind of a good experience and kind of fun to go onto the bowels. I don't know that I agree with everything Fair Vote does, but I did think the ranked choice voting was really, I really like it, and I would love to talk to anybody who has any questions. Feel free to shoot me an email, and I can answer any questions that you have. Also, I agree, the PTNEAT and the Santa Dash was great. I think having all of Barnett Elementary come was really good. There was a lot of people there, and I like giving out donuts. There's one thing I'm good at, I can give out donuts. And so that was a lot of fun. I do agree, I was actually going to bring this up anyway, I do agree with Janine, that I think it's time to expand our lighting of Payson a little bit more, and Tracy's not here to say no, so we can do it. But there's some beautiful trees that are right on that driveway out in front of PTNEAT, and I think they need some manpower. They usually put up more lights, correct? I think there's usually more lights on PTNEAT, but it's all volunteer, and so we didn't get as many up this year, but I think the city can, I think we need to buy some, the ones that you don't put up aren't in good repair. Am I understanding that right, Janine?
Yeah, we put out all the ones we have, so that's.
That works?
Yeah.
Because usually you have like the windows done, and a bigger, a bigger tree, right? The big tree out front is bigger, usually.
No, but they're all out. I mean, we would like more.
Okay, well, I would agree. So if we look at some lighting for next year, the PI meters, again, that was probably the biggest meeting that we've had, and it was, I don't know that it's fun to say that it's, to be involved in a conversation that can be kind of tense sometimes, but it was good to be able to get out and meet with the residents and talk to them, and discuss, you know, what we understand and what they understand, and come to new understandings. Really appreciate Councilman Christiansen, who brought a lot of great information and better understanding. She shed some light on some things with the PI system and meters. I would like to offer my condolences once again to Officer Knight and his family, from the Weltons, and from all of us, I'm sure. That is a hard thing to lose, a loved one, especially close to the holidays. That's all that I have.
Okay, may everybody else see their thunder? Okay. Okay, and we'll move on, and we'll move on to the CTC Mayor's Youth Award. Kim, and I'll join you down there. Oh, maybe before I do that, I'd better do this from time to time. Do we have any scouts in attendance that we'd certainly like to recognize you if you're here as a scout?
Ms. Kate Edwards here. Come on up. Just stand right here by the mayor. Hey, Kate is from Payson Junior High, and this is what they had to say about Kate. Kate is always respectful and works hard in class. He always has a great attitude. Even when things seem a little down or hard, he puts on a smile and finds a positive attitude. I've always been impressed with how he is quick to include everyone, especially those with special needs. He makes sure people are not left out and invites them to work with his group without being asked, and that was Mrs. Berger. So, and then Mrs., whoa, I have no idea how you spell, see, her name is Samuel? Okay, that makes me go way better. So Kate is always willing to help out in the kitchen and is very inclusive to his peers. So congratulations, Kate. And then Daniella, are you there? Come on up. I'm going to have to step down just a bit and let her sit down by the mayor, and there you go. Okay, so Daniella is from Mount Nebo Junior High, and Mrs. Stewart said, Daniella is intelligent and helpful to students. She's always dedicated to her studies, and her work is superior. She's also a great leader in class and at our school, and a great example, and a leader in school for LIA, which is Latinos in Action. She's a remarkable young woman. She sets herself apart by being proactive in her studies, always striving to do her best. She's an example to others as well, and welcomes and assists new students in the school. And then she said, recently, they had a new student in their class, and Daniella was standing by her desk and saw that she was assigning that student a seat, so she requested that she put that student by her, because she knew she didn't speak a lot of English. So she said she's willing to work with anyone, no matter which group she's in. She contributes meaningfully to the projects, and she really appreciates her example, and that was Mrs. Miller. And then Mrs. Henderson said, "I have worked with Daniella for the past two years. She's always very happy, or she's always very happy and has a positive attitude. She's very friendly and welcoming, and recently she was at a conference with her where the speaker asked the students in the audience a question. No one was responding, and there was a really awkward silence. Daniella raised her hand and gave a great answer. She's very sensitive to others and looks for those who need her to help, and she always has a smile on her face." So thanks, Daniella. And then is Carson Timmey. Come on up, Carson. Carson is from Payson High School, and this is Carson, is it Ruiz? Ruiz. Okay, so they said, "We are proud to nominate Carson for the Payson Mayor Recognition Award. Carson is an awesome student, and we are lucky to have him at Payson High. Carson is a great student and very interested in the medical sciences. His grades last term were almost all A's, and he is also currently in two college classes. But even more important than his grades, Carson is someone who is very helpful and looks for ways to serve. Carson is currently an office aide in the front, and Mrs. Davis, the office manager, was very complimentary of Carson. She said, 'He is so helpful in the office. He will do anything we ask, and he is really great.' We tried to present him last month, but I know he works, and he got off tonight, so we appreciate that. Thanks, Carson." So parents, if you want to come up and take some pictures, the council will come down and.
Okay, we're going to number five, Chamber Business of the Month. Ty, you're up.
Thank you. Just a quick report from the Chamber of Commerce. Sorry, my mom just texted me. Shouldn't have told her how.
Can't ignore your mother, so that's okay.
All right, so we completed our Shop Small op-lead. We'll be announcing that winner shortly. We have great participation. We have some ribbon cuttings coming up, family foot. We've had a couple podiatrists joining lately, so we're having one family foot tomorrow at noon, and then we're having stomach foot and then go across the street. That will be next, our C12-12, also at noon. But anyway, so the chamber is growing. We recently did a fundraiser for trips to China, and we made about $100,000 on that. So our efforts, you know, staring towards fundraising and becoming more self-sufficient is there. And as you know, our executive director stepped down last month. We are trying to fill that position. We are going to start interviewing. I've already had a small interview with one we've had about four applicants so far, but we're thinking about switching it instead of just making one executive director, having co-directors, one over administration, one over events, and kind of split it. And we've had more interest in that, so we'll see. But I guess before we get to the business of the month, is there any questions from the council? No, everything's good. All right. That means we're doing good. Well, let's get to the reason we're here, to recognize the business of the month. This month, our members voted, and it was close, but Brown Family Mortuary ended up winning. And there's someone from Brown.
I've served in Santa Clara's chamber for a month, a few years, and we were so small, it really helped, I think, both communities to come together, to serve together, and how we've grown. Every month, we get the list of businesses that are nominated and as I go through and vote, I've never voted for myself, never felt like there's a reason to do that, but there are so many good businesses in this community. We're fortunate to be counted among them and we're really honored to be considered as business of the month, so thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. We'd like to welcome Utah Transit Authority trustee Kent Millington. He's here to present to us some information, so welcome, Kent.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Thank you for giving me some time to report some of the activities of UTA and the things that we're planning to do in the future. First of all, I'd like to introduce the fact that you may be aware that about a year ago, the legislature changed the governing structure of UTA to, from about a 15-member part-time board to three members, full-time board members that are responsible for UTA and its operations. I happen to be one of those three. I represent Utah and Tuilla Counties. I live in Highland, so I live here in the county as well. Carlton Christensen represents Salt Lake County and Beth Holbrook represents Davis, Weaver, and Boxelner Counties. The three of us are responsible for UTA and recently we hired a new executive director of UTA, Carolyn Gonat, from San Jose, California. She's had about 23 years in the transit business and so brings a tremendous amount of experience during a period of rapid growth and expansion in San Jose. So she has been experiencing exactly what we are going through now. And so she brings that kind of perspective and we're grateful to have her. I'd like to give a report on a couple of the successful things that UTA has done here in the county and then talk a bit about some of the planning that has been going on concerning, especially concerning the south end of the county. First of all, about a little over a year ago, we initiated this Bus Rapid Transit System between the Orem and Provo frontrunner stations that runs through both universities. Last year, we averaged, during the first year, we averaged about 10,000 riders a day. This year, so far, was, so far this fall, we've been averaging about 14,000 a day. And so that means something probably close to 7,000 cars are not on the road there. As a matter of fact, both universities have reported to us that there's been about 1,500 fewer parking passes purchased in each of the schools. And UDU has told us that they have decided not to build new parking areas simply because the demand has gone away with Bus Rapid Transit. So it's very beneficial. One of the things that you will see in the next year or two, we have started the building of the pedestrian bridge from the Orem frontrunner station across, over the top of the freeway and the railroads there and ending in the parking lot of UDU. The UDU side has already begun building. You will see that structure begin to come out of the ground on both sides of the freeway and then it'll be connected over the next couple of years. It's about, I understand it's about 10 feet wide, so plenty of room for pedestrians and bikes. And we anticipate that it'll be a real help to those who are parking on the west side of the freeway and accessing the university. So you'll begin to see that emerge here shortly. One of the things that we initiated this fall is a circulating bus around Thanksgiving Point. It's no secret that there's a lot of businesses and a lot of traffic around SR 92 and the freeway. And so what we've done, we've been meeting for the last several months with the mayors in that area, Mayor Johnson from Lehigh and businesses in the area, UDOT, UTA, we've all gotten together and began to talk about how we can facilitate moving people around that area to decrease the demand for automobiles. And it seems to be working. We just initiated this circulating bus this fall in August and it seems to be working well. It's a little hard to tell because the construction going on, it's chaos around there, and so that'll be settled down by a year from now. But the pattern that we started in the north end of the county, we have begun to initiate here in the south end of the county. We're going to, because of the expansion possibilities and necessity actually, because of the growth here in the south end of the county, we're getting together the representatives of Springville, Spanish Fork, and Payson to begin the conversation of how we can plan for transit opportunities in the south end of the county because of your tremendous growth. Now specifically, we've met several times with Mayor Wright and others here from Payson City as we consider the expansion of frontrunner down this far. As you know, we own the right-of-way all the way down here to Payson. Along that right-of-way, M-Tech and UDU are talking about expansions here in Payson. You're well aware of the things that are going on. And we've had meetings, a number of meetings, where we've actively discussed where the stations would be placed, preservation of right-of-way, whatever has to happen in order for these expansion efforts to be met with transit opportunities and facility over the next several years. It's not something that's going to happen immediately, but it is going to happen eventually. And so we're planning for that. Now, one of the things that we've, some of you may have taken frontrunner and I take it into work every day, so I'm on it all the time. One of the things that has inhibited frontrunner's effectiveness a little bit is the new federal requirement to have what we call Positive Train Control, or PTC. You'll hear it referred to. That means that anything that may go wrong is, if the arms on the crossing don't come down or somebody drives through them and breaks them off, you would be surprised and perhaps to know that we have about 15 of those every month when people try to break through the arms because they can't wait.
Do they get to pay for the replacements?
If we are lucky enough to get a license number from our video cameras, here we go after them. We don't, we're not always that lucky, but we do try to recover some of that loss. But the Positive Train Control means that the trains, anything that goes wrong, the train automatically begins to shut down. If that happens, it reverberates all the way from Provo to Ogden. All of the rest of the trains wind up having to slow down because the only places they can pass are at the stations. That's the only place we're double-track at this point. We are now actively pursuing both state and federal money to allow us to double-track a significant portion, if not all, eventually, all the way from Payson to Brigham City to double-track. And then that would allow us to run trains on a 15-minute headway instead of 30 minutes, a rush hour, and one hour during the rest of the time. So once we've got the facility where they can pass other than at the station, they don't have to wait at the station for the other train to pull in. They can just take off because it just facilitates that. Now, that's a long-term goal, but that is a goal. And it will, I suspect by the time we're building down here, we're very hopeful that we'll be building double-track, not single-track, as we come down here to Payson because of the growth. Now, in the meantime, we're also talking very carefully with the cities, and this is part of that planning group that we're trying to get together here in the south county, about facilitating better bus service in this area, perhaps more express buses directly from Payson to the Provo frontrunner station, that kind of facility. All of that's up for discussion and that's what we want to be talking about. We want your input. We want the input of your citizens. I represent you on the Board of Trustees. I can be found. I'll take your comments, both good and bad. I was at an Eagle Mountain yesterday and they gave me three, shall we say, suggestions. And so I've already begun to follow up on those items. We want your input because we're here to make sure that your citizens and your city are served appropriately because of the growth that's going on down here. We know it's exploding and we're trying to keep up. So we look forward to working with you as we plan to provide bus services eventually, the frontrunner service in this area. Now, some of you may have heard that we just recently initiated what we call a micro-transit in the south end of Salt Lake County, Harriman, Blochdale, Riverton, Draper area, that area in southwest Salt Lake County, what we call a micro-transit system. We have partnered with a company called Via. They've brought in 16 vans and it's almost like an Uber request. We don't pick you up at your home. We may ask you to walk down to the corner or something like that, a block or maybe two. But within that 65-mile area, 65-square-mile area in the south county, and that includes seven UTA stations, five track stations and two frontrunner stations, you can ride from near your home to one of those stations within that area and from now until the end of the year for $1. And then it'll only be $2.50 when we begin the new year. But if I already have a pass to get on frontrunner or tracks, it's free. We'll pick you up and take you to the station so you can take the train. This is a pilot program that we're running to see how it works. After two weeks, on Monday, we had 150 rides in one day. We think it sounds like it's going to be successful, but we're going to watch this over a period of time. This is maybe something to think about down here. This is a pilot. We're trying it out. How does it work? And so we're trying to meet the needs of a growing population here in the Wasatch Front and we want to work with you to figure out some of these things to do. We look forward to that. We've had several meetings with Mayor Wright and others here and we look forward to continuing to provide good service to you and better service as you grow in the future. So thank you very much for this opportunity and if you've got questions now, if some come up, I can be reached, I can be found. I'll take your input at any time. Thank you again, Mayor.
You bet. Thank you, Kent. I might mention that Kent is very, very approachable. I found that to be the case. And it's been a pleasure to be in the meetings with Kent and others of the south county group that he's talking about. And I believe it's going to be one of those committees that's going to accomplish an awful lot, so Kent is...
We're confident that it will be.
Yes, and Kent's very approachable, as I said, and it's a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you very much.
I have a quick question. What's the rough timeline on getting frontrunner down to Payson?
It's a very rough timeline.
I understand that. I understand it's a ways out.
Frontrunner probably will, I'm going to be very cautious here. I suspect somewhere in the seven to 10-year range. But in the meantime, we've got to expand bus service down here. There's some other things that can happen.
My son takes the bus every day, so we'd be interested in that.
Now, if the population continues to grow apace, that timeline could be moved up simply because we will have to. We will have the ridership that would qualify for the federal grants that would enable us to do the double-tracking and get down here, build these stations, and get on with it. Part of that, of course, would be the expansion of the two schools and the timing of that. So we're all looking at that, but I don't want to say it's going to happen in the next couple of years and then get strung up because it didn't happen.
Right, I understand.
This is a long-term deal because it's expensive. There's no question about it. It's hundreds of millions of dollars to do that. But I think we can justify that with the growth that we've got going on here in the south end of the county.
I might mention Kent's a fan of our salmon supper, so first time you came.
Oh, man. We're coming back. So thank you very much for the invite this past year, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we'll go to action items, de-action items. This will be one that I'll be taking care of. Resolution to appoint a planning commission member. Due to the resignation that was tendered by Adam Billings, we thank him for his service, but he has tendered that resignation. It's supposed to be to nominate someone to fill his places. It will be a temporary position until April of 2020. Just as a little bit of background, I did talk with three different individuals that were very, very good candidates. The three I talked to are Blair Warner, Dennis Davis, and Kerry Stokewell. After talking with all of them, I have decided to nominate Blair Warner. He's been there before and this will be a temporary fill-in position, so that would be the name that I would submit to the council to ratify if you're willing. That would be of Blair Warner. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, the only thing I have, Mayor, is it'd be nice just to have a little resume or something beforehand so we can, because we don't know really anything about the person, so...
We have interviewed Dennis Davis before. Me and you were on the interview board. Kerry Stokewell was a candidate for city council, but I'll remember that. Do you have a motion if there's no discussion?
I'd make the motion that we approve the appointment of Planning Commissioner member Blair Warner.
Is there a second?
Also, I got it.
Okay, we've had a motion, it's been second. Calls for a roll call vote, starting with Councilman Christensen.
Aye.
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 Motion, Kerry. Thank you. We'll move on to number two, resolution, South Haven Farms System Improvements Reimbursement Agreement. Travis, I guess you're up.
Mayor, Council, this is an agreement to do those utility reimbursements that, you know, if we upsize a utility, like, you know, we have to pay the upside...
be the name that I would submit to the council to ratify if you're willing. That would be of Blair Warner. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, the only thing I have, Mayor, is it'd be nice just to have a little resume or something beforehand so we can, because we don't know really anything about the person, so...
We have interviewed Dennis Davis before. Me and you were on the interview board. Kerry Stokewell was a candidate for city council, but I'll remember that. Do we have a motion if there's no discussion? I make the motion that we approve the appointment of Planning Commissioner Member Blair Warner. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we've had a motion. It's been seconded. Calls for a roll call vote, starting with Councilman Christensen.
Aye.
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 Motion Kerry, thank you. We'll move on to number two. Resolution, South Haven Farms System Improvements Reimbursement Agreement. Travis, I guess you're up.
Mayor, council, this is an agreement to do those utility reimbursements that, you know, if we upsize a utility, like, you know, we have to pay the upside, so if they require an eight-inch line and we, you know, through the master planning process, say they need a 12, we have to pay that cost difference in the material between eight and 12 inches. So, this is for culinary PI and sewer, if you look through it. And so, Nestor's been working a lot with the developer, and based on the previous annexation agreement, this is, you know, this is what it came down to with the cost. So, I don't know if you have any questions on any of that, but...
Was there a timeframe on that? I didn't notice one, how long they can be reimbursed.
Um, it's supposed to be, typically, it's once the utility is installed, that's when we would reimburse them because, obviously, if, for some odd reason, if they walked away, you know, or didn't finish, then, you know, we wouldn't have wanted to have paid them. So, typically, it's once they've installed it, we've approved it, and, you know, started the warranty period is when we would pay them, so...
I was interested why your PI was a bigger upsize than your culinary water. Is that typical?
Um, just because we have some small pipes, as you know, throughout the city, so through running it through the water models, that was what was needed based on some of the future growth patterns in there and then what, you know, with that development. So, yeah, and it's all just depending on how big the system is and where it's going and, you know, how many units are being served and that, so it's not an easy answer.
No, no, I think it went from an eight to a 10-inch water line and went from an eight-inch to a 16-inch PI line.
And it depends on what the sizes are that we're looping and...
And where you're going to and what it's being to...
That's why that one got bigger.
No, that makes sense. That's all I needed to think.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution for the South Haven Farms System Improvement Reimbursement Agreement.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's been made. It's been seconded. Roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman Hye.
Aye.
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 Motion Kerry, thank you, Travis. Move on to number three. Amendments to Springside Meadows, Plat I and J, including public utilities, utility easements. Jill?
Okay, wrong lights. Did I just turn you off?
Yeah.
That's okay.
Wake up, wake up. Anyway, sorry about that. I've just got two quick slides. It's a minor adjustment, but it does require a plot amendment because it is a recorded plat. So, we're talking about the Springside Meadows development. That is the large master plan development that's down by Spring Lake Elementary School on the south side of Payson. So, the Town Homes neighborhood has been purchased by D.R. Horton, and so there's two plats with that. There's Plat I and Plat J. So, I just wanted to show you here, here's I, which is the southern portion of that, and then J is located here for the benefit of the public. Spring Lake Elementary School is located in this location here, 1800 South. So, we went through this whole review process. We got approval. We got information from the private utility providers of where utilities will go, recorded the plat, and then found out there was a problem. We actually had a request, or in the field, Dominion Energy was concerned with the distance or the clearance between their gas line to serve these units and where the foundation wall or where the structures will be. So, in this development, the gas lines have been installed along the roadways to serve all of these units here, but because there is not enough clearance, we need to shift the structures two to three feet depending on which structures we're looking at. So, it does vary throughout the development, two to three feet. But the goal of this plat amendment is to take the buildings and shift them further in or into the open space areas to give additional clearance or distance between the gas line and the structures. So, it's only two to three feet throughout these plats, but that would give Dominion Energy the distance that they need. Luckily for the applicant, they have some open space that they can work with because we do have open space. All of this area here in the gray is actually open space. It's going to be used either for storm drainage or for amenities and for play areas. And so, they do have the ability to ship those in order to accommodate Dominion Energy, but because the plats were recorded, state code does require an action by the city council for this amendment, and then with anticipation that the city council approves it tonight, we'll work with the applicant to get this new plat recorded. If you have any questions for staff, and we do have Representative Steve Mann with D.R. Horton, if you have any questions for him.
I have a quick question for you, Jill.
Yes.
On one of those plats, haven't they already poured the foundations?
So, they have poured the foundations, recognizing that the current plat, but they did discover the problem before those foundations, so they have made the adjustment.
So, if we don't make the adjustment, then that's...
Then there will be, there will be a problem.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Well, the challenge is, is we had this discussion with Dominion Energy even before this plat was recorded. Staff was concerned about the cross-section and where all those utilities would go. So, there was a very specific conversation held through the review process, and at that time, it was, there was enough clearance, cross-section works, and then out in the field, we discovered that it does not. And so, yeah, so it's just created sort of a domino effect because the applicant was in the process. We had permits that had already been approved and was moving in that direction when we discovered this problem.
Any further discussion? If not, I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I have a legal question, but I don't know. Do you, oh, I just, curiosity, just from a legal stake of Dominion, they were included on all the conversations, and they made the error. Is that their expense that they have to fix? Like, if we didn't, let's just say that we didn't pass this. I don't, it seems like a no-brainer to me. I'm just curious how that, how that works.
I don't know if they would have the responsibility there or if they would just have to live with...
Dominion would just have to live with it?
To live with the clearance that's there. And I think they're...
And is their concern, like, operating of the lines or is their concern, like...
I think it's just distance. I think it's just if, if something, I think it's just a matter of getting there and working on the facility in that limited space in the event that something does happen or repairs need to be made. So, it could be a want and not a necessity either, but as I mentioned, there was something, there was a red flag that was done in the field after permits were issued and everything, and now we're trying to find a way to accommodate Dominion Energy's request.
Does that cost the developer more money?
Yes. The plans have to be adjusted, so that costs...
Figure driveways.
Yeah, so, we would be more concrete.
Yeah.
Yeah. So...
Okay, but waiting for a motion.
You ready for me this time?
I'm ready for a motion.
I'm ready. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the amendments to Springside Meadows Plats I and J, including public utility easements.
Okay, you have a motion. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion Kerry, thank you. We'll go on to number four.
David, do I need to acknowledge that this is my wife's uncle or anything like that? Just to put it on the record? Just so that we're aware of that? I don't think I'll recluse myself, but I want to make it public, so...
By asking a question, you're acknowledging yourself.
I shouldn't ask that. People have one's phone.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. So, this one, Sterling Grove, Plat E, this is, well, this, what came up was brought to staff through a building permit, and tonight, we just have to be in discussion on it because it was brought up after the notice window, so we didn't have time to do the full noticing, so it can't be a plat amendment tonight. We'd have to have signatures and whatnot. So, this is just a discussion, so it's not truly an action item here. So, let's repropose. I'll walk you through it. First of all, where we're talking, this is Sterling Grove, Plat E. It's the homes on the east side of that Sterling Grove subdivision on the north side of town there. So, you can see in red the plat, R175, single-family homes in Plat E. And as we look a little closer, here's the subdivision, and you can see on the north side, which is the left side of this, there's Douglas Drive, which is not currently built, but the right-of-way was dedicated, reserved for a future road, and we'll take a closer look at that. You can see the single-family homes there. So, there's that Douglas Drive area and Lot 506 in red, and that's the area that's under question. And the reason for that is there's a future road proposed for 600 North. Ongoing discussions, and there's not a firm timetable as to when that will happen, but staff anticipates that at some point, this will happen with signalized intersection on 600 North and Main Street. And the owners of Lot 506 there in red have applied for a building permit to build their home. And, let's see, you can see here, right now, again, that road's not there, but you can see how the surrounding area of this home will be changing at some point in the future with this anticipated road going right there. And on the plat, because this road is anticipated, there's a note that states that Lot 506 is required to have primary garage funding 100 West, which you can see right here. You can see the home with a driveway facing 100 West at the southwest corner, so the driveway would be at the southwest corner of the lot. And Lot 506, she'll have a side yard setback along Douglas Drive of 10 feet as shown on the plat. And that 10-foot setback differs from our standard corner lot side setback because of the right-of-way that's being taken here, and so that was an agreement between the city and the developer. So, this is recorded on the plat, and the challenge that came up is the owners, while required to do something similar to what you're seeing here with that driveway on the south side, want to put the driveway on the north side like that. And they applied for a building permit with the driveway on the north side, which staff responded, you know, with a red line the day after they submitted, saying that driveway and the home will just need to be flipped. They can do the same layout, but it need to be flipped, so the driveway's on the southwest side, as stated on the plat.
So, Dan, I've got a quick question for you. Didn't they move the house? You just moved the driveway, but didn't they move the house also farther into the lot?
Uh, yeah, so the owner, or applicant or however, has suggested that they could scoot the house down a little bit where the required setback's 10 feet. There's enough wiggle room to move it to 16 feet, so the corner lot side setback would be 16 instead of just the required 10. So, an extra six feet. So, that would scoot it down a little bit so it's out of the intersection, but not enough to be adhering to the plat or to address the concerns of staff. But that is a bone that the applicant threw out to see if they can keep it on the north side if it's scooted down six feet. So, this has been discussed by DRC and REITs and the engineers are all under the professional opinion that having the driveway on the south side be safer. That's the reason why it's on the plat, and one of the reasons for that is they anticipate with the signalized intersection on 600 North and Main Street that there would be a little bit more traffic here than on some typical residential intersection in our city, so without speaking on behalf of the engineer too much. So, anyway, that is all I really have on this, and the reason it would be a plat amendment is to remove that note from the plat. Otherwise, it won't be a plat amendment. So, any, or what should I say? What questions do you have for staff about that? Council's recommendation is to keep the note.
Right. I have a few questions for you. So, what are the chances, I mean, even if there's lights there, of putting that road in because it really doesn't go to very much and it just more, have more congestion in there than that a three-way, you know, instead of a four-way stop, a three-way? I think it might be better than, and to try to get the right-of-way through McDonald's, we don't have that or anything like that, so it might be better, and maybe I'm all wrong, but just to, I'll let Travis address that, but...
I know Travis's concern is if it's not here, it'd have to be somewhere else, but Travis can go.
My concern is, is that MAC has Fourth North listed as a main thoroughfare because it does go underneath the freeway. So, to me, you're two city blocks. I don't know that, I think the traffic flow is going to go to Fourth North.
This is actually one of the projects we just submitted to MAC for funding because if you drive that, especially during rush hour, you can't turn left in either direction because people are trying to turn left coming south on the 6th North, and they're trying to turn left into McDonald's, and as you can see where their entrance is to McDonald's, there is no room there for cars to even, to stacking and go.
Right.
And we actually proposed building the road and getting rid of that McDonald's entry.
Moving McDonald's up into the other parking lot.
And so, the people leaving McDonald's would actually access, either go up to where the trucks leave or access this road and use the signal light because if you ever been to McDonald's at 5:00 P.M., good luck trying to turn left out of there to go, you know, to the interstate.
Have we modeled it? What is the traffic flow if it's there?
I don't know, but Nestor's the one that actually drew that road right there.
Right. It's a nice-looking road.
And I'm not going to lie, I think it would help.
I mean, you know, not disagree with anything you said about maybe Fourth North would probably be used more, but this would alleviate a big problem that's with, you know, with both trying to go north and southbound and trying to turn left right there, and there's just no room.
How many houses, homes did we put in the Sterling subdivision? There's quite a few in there.
Plus, you know, you could have people that go from the south because this would, once this is a signalized intersection, this is going to be your best way to turn left because any road south of here, there's no signal until you get cleared out, even SR198.
Well, I think that problem needs to be resolved. At the same time, if you put a light there, we need to go on Fourth North because...
And unfortunately, you're UDOT road, that's a UDOT road, so we're at their mercy on the, they're warrant.
Right. How close are we to warranting it at Fourth North?
But this is a project we just submitted today for MAC funding. Now, I don't know if we'll get it, but this would obviously be expedited sooner than later.
So, you put in for the road and the light or just the lights?
Both.
Both.
Do we need lights on Fourth North and right here?
Well, the problem is, is Fourth North, though, goes underneath the freeway. It's a truck route.
It's a hell of a track. Because it seems like that, we will come on traffic.
Right.
This is your main access for all of Arrowhead to get to the interstate.
Right.
Until the Nebo Beltway is built. That's why we feel like a signal would go here because all your traffic trying to get to the interstate from the Arrowhead developments will come down 6th North right here.
And I understand that there was a, there was a slip-up in this whole process, and the car did get put before the horse, and I've actually looked at the site, and my concern is, is if you pull it out and fix it, you'd have to change the plans because you can't put the garage back in the way it is because you wouldn't be setting it on virgin soil, so that you have to backfill and compact it and do all of that. So, it's, I mean, there's a major expense there, and I don't know what the traffic flow would look like. I mean, would that have a stop sign there? Would there be any stops? Would it just be the typical Payson-Uta intersection with nothing there? You just go through it? You know, I mean, these are legit questions because it would change if they're coming into a stop off of 6th, off of Arrowhead Trail before they come into that subdivision.
Yeah, I mean, if this road was built, then the signal would go there.
Well, I'm not talking there. I'm talking right by the house. So that...
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to put a stop sign in one of them.
One of the two intersections and directions and...
I mean, whichever way we felt was the through road, which, you know, could possibly be, you know, on the north-south.
Right, right, and I understand that as well. I kind of, I think stop signs work well as speed bumps as well. So, if you're coming off Arrowhead Trail at a higher rate, like I'm blowing through that smoke, I would put it as a speed bump as they enter that intersection.
The guy in the uniform is over the stop sign. I'm just in charge of actually putting them in.
The problem, if we put it there, it's going to stack all the way
The problem if we put it there, it's going to stack all the way out into the, into the main street. So we're going to have to put where that driveway is right there.
So, can he, can you pull up? I don't know. No, I don't, I don't know. I agree, it's a tough call.
What about, I mean, even if there's a stop sign, what about visibility there? I mean, we've run into people that have cars parked in the driveway, not in the garage, that really hampers visibility in other areas in town. I don't want to create another situation. I, I'm with staff on this one. I don't, I don't see a reason to move the driveway. I don't think it's safe, I don't think it's, I get that it's convenient and they like it, but I just... He, no matter where you put your stop signs, like you're still creating a problem.
And the applicant made a good point and I drove through and did find three or four other building lots ahead, and maybe it was just two. Was it, yeah. The driveway did come out to that side. I can see pros and cons to both sides of it. And I can argue the one because the concrete's sitting in the ground, which is part of the problem. But if, if it does become a little bit more of a busy road, it'd be nice to have a buffer if that was your house, if the garage was between your house and your sleeping quarters, you know. So if your, your bedrooms are on the one side, you don't have the McDonald's, you don't have all of that, it's a buffer. But that's, that's my thought process on it. I do understand the concerns with exiting in and out of that to make it happen, is to back into it.
It's not any worse than on Main Street.
Well, well, that's, that's a horrible, yeah.
Well, but my point is that we've got a chance to deal with it. Like whatever happened a long time ago happened, like why would you say, and that's my concern, is like why would you say, "Well, we've got a really bad situation here, let's put another one in"? Like I don't, I don't know that that's... Like if we can prevent it right now, with 4 E...
Yeah, I remember something we approved here a lot long ago, was the townhomes over on the highway. And I said, "They're going, they're backing right into a 55, or 45 mile an hour, 55 mile an hour", and we passed that and there's five homes, they back right into that traffic road.
And it's a main thoroughfare now, but isn't going to be in the future, and this one is the inverse of that. Where it's not.
There's not a major road right now, there's no...
When it'll go in, who knows?
Yeah, and if MAC does approve it, rather than later.
But I think, I think the staff has done their due diligence on it. I know Nestor's put lots of hours into this. And like I said, he's, he's got all the traffic and all the accidents that have happened there, and so they're trying to alleviate that. I think, I just think that we need to, oh, I'll talk louder. I just think we need to, like, listen to them a little bit more because I know that they have put a lot of time into looking at this. And I don't think they're trying to say, "You can't do this", but I think, I know that Nestor's probably looking at that like, "That is right by the main thoroughfare". I mean, if you put that road in, I see people using that to get down to the other houses and maybe just, instead of going out by the bowling alley, coming this way and getting, I can see them using that road. I would use that road.
And your thoughts? Knowing full well this is just a conversation to scope it out, so to speak. I think if we, I think if we can prevent a problem from happening, I think that's what we need to consider.
Well, the other question is, is if this applicant doesn't buy that house, is it still going to sell?
So unless it's like someone that we know that we're trying to help out, like that house is going to sell to the next person that comes in and says, "Okay, we'll do that, I understand we're in building".
Well, it's not so much selling the house, they have to pull up all the foundations, start over.
Was it the foundation? How many guys, the ones you like, foundation already there?
Who didn't read it?
Put the foundation into...
It, it was small, I saw it, I could see how it was overlooked, but did you, Justin is the applicant.
Yeah, the applicant is here, and the work was started before the permit.
Right.
The work was started before the permit?
Yeah, there's not a building permit for it, yeah.
I'm Justin Hill, I'm, I was the developer on this. And that last little phase, it overslip, I think we see the Mylar when we sign it and send out the candidate to record it. And we don't, I know in the building, they don't, and so the guy that bought the applicant has bought this lot. And done that, he came to me, he's like, "Can we flip the house? Absolutely, we can flip the house." I know we've got a 10-foot setback there on that north side. And I told him, "Yes, but you have to shove it all the way to the south", not thinking about the little paragraph later that was brought to my attention by the staff. And I says, "But it needs to be that way, push, push it to the south". With that being said, I'm like, "Let's keep, could we turn this plan in like five times down there"? So we didn't anticipate any issues coming through. I talked to the staff, I says, "Can we do this? The foundation is not poured, footings are. And at this point, if, if we do flip this", concern I have with that, which is kind of, I ran into as I've gone through this, is we'll probably dig it up, put the, the house, go to the north because John requires, I think, 14 feet to get into the backyard, and these lots are 162 feet deep. So to make your backyard usable, he, I think he requires like 14 feet to get back there of a drive, to have a drive strip pass there. And so if we put it on the north side, that's why I made him shove it all the way to the south so that we could use that strip to get into the backyard. If we have to flip it, we're going to put the house eight feet, or 10 feet off the property line. And so that we can have an access to the backyard still. My other issue is, like, so throughout the, the whole subdivision, property line is street side of sidewalk, not the backside of sidewalk. So with that being said, our property line is street side of sidewalk. And where the sidewalk's going to be five feet wide, you're going to have a sidewalk five feet off your windows, off your bedroom windows.
People with... On the north side?
Yeah, I'm anticipating the city, if they build that road, the city is going to be required to put in that sidewalk, correct? For people to walk. So if that's the case, the house will be literally five feet off the sidewalk.
So actually, the house might be more of a hindrance of sight?
The house will be more of a hindrance to sight rather than having a driveway on the north side. Because in the plat that we recorded, it says the primary driveway is to be on the southwest side. So if you guys decided that that's the way it needs to be, we'll flip out the driveway, but we're supposed to be putting driveway in on the north side for a secondary driveway. But the primary driveway has to be on the south side according to the plat right now. So that's why we're asking for an amendment, so that it eliminates shoving that house to the south and eliminates, I mean, we'll end up doing the second driveway on the north side, a secondary one. Which the plat doesn't say anything about a secondary, it just says the primary. So whatever you guys decide. I mean, it's something that totally missed, I went by me because I'm like, I've seen two or three houses in there that the drivers were on the corner, I'm like, "It's not going to be, we'll shove it in and have that open space", so, thank you guys. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I know it's just a discussion, it's not a motion, that's the... You may, go ahead.
So with the sidewalk, we, the city can do a monolithic sidewalk there. So by removing the park strip, it wouldn't come in as much where the rest of the Sterling Grove Development has the park strip. So that would keep the sidewalk further from the house in this case. And I wasn't following the, the full discussion, it sounded like they're, or Justin was discussing a secondary access into the rear yard, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we would not allow a curb cut, so that secondary curb cut on that road right there. So that home needs to be accessed from the west side.
So you can't, so you wouldn't...
But I'll turn my microphone on. So the Arrowhead, what, what is that road? Is it 600 North?
Douglas Drive is what it's giving, given the plat.
Yeah.
It's a good road, I mean, it's 600 North as far as numbers.
Yeah, well, let's keep it 600 North personally.
Yes, 600 North.
600 North, so you're saying that if he wanted to access his own property from 600 North, that isn't a viable option with a curb cut?
We would have to work with the streets department on that. And I can't say definitively, but it's my understanding that the home needs to face the west and that we would not allow a curb cut there. But maybe Travis knows, but ultimately it'd be Ken, oh, Kent is here.
Kent's here.
Oh my gosh, Kent can speak for himself all the way.
I, I think is what Justin was implying though, is it wouldn't be on the 600 North, the, the road, the driveway that's still there, they would just shift the house so they could still get around it from that side of the road. Because it's big, it's deep enough, you've got to have access to it. And so they sucked it the one way, using the driveway to access that north side of the house is kind of where the whole thought process went. And 162 feet deep is a deep lot.
Yes, so you're saying just to get back in there?
Just to get back in there so you can get in and out and, and so...
So you could widen your driveway, but one of the concerns with having the driveway on the north side of the house or whenever we have a driveway at by an intersection, is the desire to pave the side of the house, to park trailers, RVs, you know, on the side of the house. And then all of a sudden, we have the, the side next to the street paved as well as the driveway to the, the road paved. And then we have RVs, trailers, trucks, whatnot, parked right in that line of sight triangle. So by having it on the non, so having it on the interior lot side, paving from the driveway to the property line, you can then park, you know, that fifth parking space on the side of the house without being in any line of sight. If that makes sense.
Couldn't you put a, a need restriction on it though, for, far as putting an extra parking?
Yeah, if, if the owners were to agree to that, it might be somewhat difficult to enforce in that, we'd have to track it, but...
Say we have so many things like that that we never could track.
I have a question.
Right, there's not, there's not a permit though to pave, and so I'm not sure we'd catch it until after it was already paved.
I have to know that you don't need to pave, you can just park the trailer in there.
How often, how often do we let people start building so they have a permit?
We do not allow that. If it requires a permit, we do not allow the work to start before...
Then why do they do this without a permit?
That's our fault.
Yeah.
So that it comes down to that?
Yep.
I mean, are we going to start breaking our own ordinances and rule? I keep coming down...
I can't agree to that, so that's why I was there.
Any further discussion? Okay, I still feel kind of the same way, it seems like it might be three and two just filling it, but I wouldn't mind going down with Brett sometime, if he's got time to go look at it. Sounds like we've got time and willingness to take a look at it, so we'll go ahead and leave the conversation where it's at and research it further.
One note, on the plat, it does indicate, as you go, and it's not on this picture, but as you go to the bottom of the picture, at each of those adjoining lots, they will access, now, if you take a look at all of those lots, will access the, yes, 100 West, and they are all the same width. So you're not encumbering or impairing the lot that is on the end. Lot 506, and accessing in and that would be the exact same for every single property owner across the board. And it's technical, but it's actually about a half foot wider than every single one that is, is on there. My point being is, there is nothing different with this lot than any of the adjoining lots that would require access off of Douglas 600 into that lot, given the back lot.
So you're saying if it was flipped, you could still get in your backyard, is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is that, that every single lot is identical, including this one, and access to any of the other lots would not be through the back, back. It would be from the front to the back, not sideways.
Okay, I, I guess that's where we'll, we'll leave that, thank you. Okay. Yeah, we do. Good.
Because there's 100 feet of hill.
Bill, yeah.
Yeah, can I make a comment about that? If councilmembers go out and take a look, can you get feedback to staff as soon as possible because we would need to notice it and we'd need to get signatures and that kind of thing? I don't know if that's what, you were walking up to me, is that what you wanted me to mention? So in order to make it to our January meeting, we'd have to send notices out quickly, very quickly.
Oh, yeah, we do have an extra...
Yeah, so just in the next week or two, we need to know.
Sound good, thank you, Daniel. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to adjourn to closed session. I'll entertain a motion for, to adjourn to closed session. So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion carries, roll call vote, starting with Councilman Christensen.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, we'll adjourn to...